रूपम चोतिह परस्य धीमहि यन्नक सत्येन दीपये सत्येन दीपये ओं थक्स वितूर वरम रूपम चोतिह परस्य धीमहि यन्नक सत्येन दीपये सत्येन दीपये
अन्य केनंद्री
थैंक यू मैडम नमने वरेयम इन एरतिल लाइव डिवाइन पायलवधर का है उरुंगणैत्तिन्त वायपनै नमक्के अलितुल्ला भगवानकुम श्री अन्नेकुम नमदन नन्रिययम वनकत्तियम और रलद पोर्पादंगलिल समर्पिपोम नमनदिल एरुम ओवर एन्नत्तियम नाम पेसम ओवर वार्तियम इत्तरणत्तिल और रलक्क कानिकिया है समर्पिपोम अनिवरकुम माले वनकम लाइव डिवाइन ले चैप्टर 22 डी प्रॉब्लम ऑफ़ लाइफ पाठ्यत्रक्रो पोन सेशन वारीको पैराग्राफ 9 वारीको नम्बर मुझचरुनो इंदर सेशन ले पैराग्राफ 10 लेंथ नम्बर में कोणतो तोड़लाम पोन सेशन ले पात एन्ना पातो अभिनिर्दर ओर ब्रीफ नम्बर निनेव कोरलाम इंदर चैप्टर ले डी प्रॉब्लम ऑफ़ लाइफ अंदर करत्तल भगवान अंदर करत्ते ओटी एन्ना सोल्फिन्डर इन राल लाइफ अभिनिर्दर नमलोरकुम तेरियो भगवान उड़िया लाइव डिवाइन ले नाम अरिंदुल्ला पड़ी लाइफ अभिनिर्दर कॉन्शियसनेस फोर्स अदनोडिया वेलिपाड़ चिट्सत्तीन वेलिपाड़ एन्पदे नमक्के तेरियो इंदर कॉन्शियसनेस एंड फोर्स अभिनिर्दर अदनोडिया मोलम पातोन अभिनीना अदन उन्दर सचिदानंदावीन अडिपड़े अमसंगल डी लाइफ प्रॉब्लम ऑफ़ लाइफ ले उन्दर डी प्रॉब्लम्स एंड डिफिकल्टीज यदनाल तोंडिकिन्तर दे केन्नदन मोलम अदयारायम्बुर्द भगवान एन्ना करत्ते कोरिंडर इन राल डी कॉन्शियसनेस एंड फोर्स इधि इरण्डक्क मेडल उन्दर ओर बैलेंस इधि रेंटो सीरा अर्कुम्बोर्ड प्रॉब्लम अर्काद यंगेलाम उन्दर कॉन्शियसनेस किर्जय रन्दर अंदर फोर्स डॉमिनेट आहुदो अंदे एडर्थल एन्ना अभिनीना अंदे इम्बैलेंस वर्ध इंपरफेक्ट पॉइस अभिनिर्दर भगवान इंपरफेक्ट पॉइस इनकिन्तर सोट्रोडारी भगवान उपयोगिकिन्तर इंपरफेक्ट पॉइस इरुकुम्बुर्द विदविदमान प्रॉब्लम्स लाइफ ले वरिकिन्तर भगवान नंदे यंगे मूंड्र विदमान सवालकल डिफिकल्टीज मनदनीडम तोंडिकिन्तरना यदनाल इंदर इंपरफेक्ट पॉइस ऑफ़ कॉन्शियसनेस एंड फोर्स अभिनिर्दर तत्पोर्तु मनदन निर्क्कोडी नेले ले तोंडिकिन्तरना अभिनिर्दर मुदल प्रॉब्लम एदन पातो अभिनीना मुदल फर्स्ट डिफिकल्टी मनदन उड़िया अरियामय मनदन को उन्दर तन्नै पट्री उल्ला न्यानम उन्दर ओर कुरिया अलव दान उल्लद मेहरपुरत्तल दान अर्किन्तर दे मेहरपुर मनम मेहरपुर अवनूड़िया उडलीन सैलबॉडगल अवनूड़िया वार्वी मेहरपुर यकंगल दुदान इवैदान अवनक्के तेरिकिन्तरना अनाल अवनूड़िया अंदर मेहरपुर जीवन के कीर्ति डाडी उनर्व तरम आर उनर्व आर मनत्तलंगल सबकॉन्शियस एंड सबलिमिनल माइंड अभिनिर्दर भगवान इंदर तलंगल दान उन्दर अवनूड़िया कॉन्शियसनेस ले पातो अभिनीना 90% मेल इदन उड़िया आदिक्कम दान इरुकिन्तर दे अनाल मनदन इदै अरिया विल्ले अवनूड़िया न्यानम एल्लाम मेहरपुरत्तिले तंगिविडिकिन्तर दे इनकिन्तर करत्ते चक्षोल कोरिंडर आदलाल इंदर परिम्बानमयान अवनूड़िया पगदियाना इंदर अड़िउनर्व तलंगल आर उनर्व तलंगल अवैदान अवनै आलु किन्तरना अदीप पट्री अवनक्के तेरियाद मनदन क्क तेरियाद अनाल अंदर आर उनर्व तलंगल मनदन अरिंदुल्लना मनदन अवैदान आलुमेय सहिन्तरना इनकिन्तर करत्ते कोरिंडर इंदर एक्सिस्टेंस एंड कॉन्शियसनेस एक्सिस्टेंस नम्लुड़िया जीवन अंदर कॉन्शियसनेस अंदर फोर्स इधि एल्लामी इंदर मूंड्रमय उन्दर ओन्नर दान एन्दर अलावक नम्रुड़िया अंदर जीवन कोरित्त नम्रुड़िया एक्सिस्टेंस कोरित्त डी अवेयरनेस एन्दर अलावक नमक्के इरुकिन्तर दो अंदर अलावक नमक्के अंदर अदे कोरित्त अंदर उनर्व नले इरुकिन्तर एन्दर अलावक नम्बर दे कोरित्त अंदर कॉन्शियसनेस इरुकिन्तर दो अंदर अलावक अदन मीद नम्मल आलुमेय सिलता मुड़ियम एन्दर नम जीवनली एन्दर पगदीन मेल नाम एन्दर पगदी नाम अरिंद्राम अरिंद्रामल अदीप पट्री उनर्व नले अत्रवर अत्रवर खलाह इरुकिन्तरोमो अंदर पगदी उन्दर नम्मिन कट्टुपाटलीले नम्मिन आलुमेय ले सैल बढ़ुद इल्ले अवै अनैत्यमी नम्रुड़िया मेहरपुर जीवन के कीर्ति सैल बढ़िकिन्तरना यन्नदाल अवै अनैत्यमी नम्रुड़िया उनर्व नले इल्ले नाम उनर्व नले इल्ले अवैले उनर्व दिल्ले आदलाल अवै नम्रुड़िया कट्टुपाटलीले ओर मनदन उड़िया जीवन एडत्त कोण्टाल अवन उन्दर मेहरपुर जीवन अड़िउनर्व तलंगल इधर लाम इरुंदालम कोड अदुन्दर अवनूड़िया ओट्टुमत्ते जीवनीन बेवेर पगदीगल दान अदनाल एन्दर पगदीन मंदर अधिकम सक्तिवायिन्त राह सैल बढ़िकिन्तर दो अंदर पगदी दान अवनूड़िया जीवनीन परिम्बानमयान सैलहले तीर्माणिकिन्तर आदलाल भगवान निंग एन्ना कोरिंडर इन राल ओर मनदन तन्नुड़िया मेल उनर्व तलत्तिल दान वार्गिन्तर अवनूड़िया परिम्बानमयान अवनूड़िया सैलबॉडगल एल्लाम अंदर अवनूड़िया आर उनर्व अड़िउनर्व तलंगल इल्लिरुंद शैल बढ़िकिन्तरना इंदर तलंगल दान अवनूड़िया परिम्बानमयान जीवन आक्रिमिकिन्तरना अदीप पट्री अवनक्के डी कॉन्शियसनेस उनर्व नले अत्रवनाह मनदन इरुकिन्तर आदलाल ओर मनदन एडत्त कोण्टाल अवन एन्दर अवनूड़िया जीवनीन एन्दर पगदी आल अवन आलुमेय सहयपड़िकिन्तरना इन राल अवनूड़िया अड़िउनर्व तलम एंड अड़ि आर उनर्व तलंगल सबकॉन्शियंट एंड सबलिमिनल यन्नदाल लिवी दान अधिक पच्च पगदीए अवनूड़िया जीवनल आक्रिमिकिन्तरना अदे कोरित्त अवनक्के डी कॉन्शियसनेस इल्ले यदाव द मनदन को उन्दर कोंजमाव द उन्दर अवनक्के आलुमेयो अवनक्के वज़ी नड़त्तुदलो तिडकिन्तर द इन राल अदन मुरम्मा हान सैल बढ़िकिन्तरना इन राल अदुकोड़ अवन अंदर उनर्व त्र निले इन करुविहत्तन सैल बढ़िकिन्तर इनकिन्तर करत्ते भगवान कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर आदलाल मनदन उड़िया मुदल प्रश्न एन्ना अभिनीना अवन तन्नै पट्री मुरुवतमा अरिंदे अरिंदुवैत्तर कविले अंदर तन्नै पट्री तन जीवनीन मुरु पाकत्ते पट्टिया न्यानम अवनक्के इरुपदिले अवनूड़िया जीवनीन परिम्बानमयान बाहंगल अड़िउनर्व तलत्तिलम आर उनर्व तलत्तिलम इरुकिन्तरना आहयाल अवैदान ओर मनदन आलुमेय सहिन्तरना अदन अवैले वज़ी नड़त्तल पेरिल दान मनदन सैल बढ़िकिन्तर इंदर करत्ते भगवान कोरिंडर इरण्डाव उन्दर
दान इंदर लास्ट लाइन ले सोल्फिन्डर उन्दर कोंज यनको उन्दर मुन्नकपिन मरण अर्कर माध्यम तेरियद देयरफुल वी आर गवर्न्ड बाय डी सबकॉन्शियंट एंड सबलिमिनल एवं इन अवर कॉन्शियसनेस एक्सिस्टेंस एंड इन अवर वेरी सेल्फ मास्ट्री एंड सेल्फ डायरेक्शन वी आर ओन्ली इंस्ट्रूमेंट्स ऑफ़ व्हाट सीम्स तू अस डी इनकॉन्शियंट विदीनस इप्पा इप्पा नम्मल एदर आलु किन्तर एक्चुअल सबलिमिनल एंड सबकॉन्शियंट अंदर दुआ अल्लाद इनकॉन्शियंट दान मुरुमया आलु इन दुदा मिंगस सन्नदले नाम पुरुंजिन्दर दे सबलिमिनलो सबकॉन्शियंट नम्रुड़े परिम्बाहमाह इरुकिन्तर दे अनाल नाम आलपड़ुदी इनकॉन्शियंट इप्पा इद उन्दे यनको उन्दे नरिया इरुकिर्द दान आलुनो अप्पडी इल्लाद बडिकी डी इनकॉन्शियंट नम्मल या गवर्न बन्नो अप्पिन्ड ओर डाउट वर्ध द अद कोंज क्लियर पुण्यने सर
श्योर श्योर नाह वेलकर इप्पो डी सबलिमिनलो सबकॉन्शियसन नम्बर एप्परी पाकरो
नम्म उन्दर अरियामय लादा द अद पट्टी तेरियामत्ता इरुंदन रुको
अद तान भगवान सोल्डर अद तान इनकॉन्शियंट अभिनिर्दर सबकॉन्शियंट सबलिमिन्गर द नम्मल पुरुतोरक इनकॉन्शियंट दान अद तान भगवान सोल्डर अद दान नम्मल आलु किन्तर द अभिनिर्दर ओर मनदन उन्दर ओर मनदन उड़िया कॉन्शियस कॉन्शियस अवन कॉन्शियस अर्कर बाहंगल उन्दर अवनूड़िया जीवन ले रोम्बरोम्ब सोल्पमान बाहन नाम अवन कॉन्शियस अर्कर मेजारिटायन बाहन उन्दर अवनक्के उन्दर अवनूड़िया उनर्व के कीर्ति अर्क अवन अरे अवनूड़िया उनर्व उनर्व आर्मान तलत्तल अर्क अवनक्के उन्दर सबकॉन्शियंट अर्क अवनक्के सबलिमिनल अर्क अवन पुरुतोरिको अद लाम उन्दर इनकॉन्शियंट अवन पुरुतोरिक इनकॉन्शियंट बट अद इनकॉन्शियंट कटयाद एन्ना पुरुतोरिक एन्ना पुरुतोरिक नान अरियाद बाहंगले नान इनकॉन्शियंट इन्तर सोल्फिन्डर अवला दान सो अनाल अद दान एन्ना वज़ी नड़त्तुद अद दान भगवान सोल्डर इन अवर वेरी सेल्फ मास्ट्री एंड सेल्फ डायरेक्शन वी आर ओन्ली इंस्ट्रूमेंट्स ऑफ़ व्हाट सीम्स तू अस डी इनकॉन्शियंट विदीनस
व्हाट सीम्स
व्हाट सीम्स तू अस डी इनकॉन्शियंट विदीनस इस अवर सबकॉन्शियंट एंड सबलिमिनल
ओ सर सर ओके पुरुंजित सर सर इधि उन्दे इनकॉन्शियंट रन उन्दे नम्म नम्चनक मारी इग्नरेंस इल्ले इग्नरेंस
इल्ले नमक्के नमक्के नाम अरियाद बाहंगल अद दान नाम अरियाद बाहंगल व्हाट सीम्स तू अस व्हाट सीम्स तू अस डी इनकॉन्शियंट विदीनस अभिनिर्दर भगवान
ओके सो वी आर इग्नरेंस ऑफ़ डी सबकॉन्शियंट एंड सबलिमिनल वी आर
अमा अमा अमा
थैंक यू सर थैंक यू सर पुरुंजित
मनदन उन्दर एन्ना ओर एन्नत्तल अर्काब अभिनीना नम्बर उन्दो सुधंधरमा सैल बढ़रो इन उड़िया संगल्पम उन्दर इन उड़िया सोयमान संगल्पम नार्कुद फ्री विल इरुकुद अभिनीन एल्लार मण्डर नान अभिनीन चित्रक्रो अनाल यर अद रियलिटी एदर उन्मय पातो अभिनीना भगवान एन्ना कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर इट इस डी नेचर डी डिटरमिन्स ऑल यस वर्क यरके दान तीर्माणिकिन्तर द यरके एन्पदे डी प्रकृति डी फोर्स ऑफ़ कॉन्शियसनेस ऑफ़ डी बीइंग विदीनस अंदर यरके एन्पदे भगवान उन्दर इनक्को कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर द यूनिवर्सल नेचर अद दान भगवान कैप्टर ले कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर डी यरके एन्पदे यदन उड़िया ओर मरुपक्कम इन राल सचिदानंदावीन मरुपक्कम सचिदानंद तन्नी मरित्त कोण्डिटिन्तर अदन उड़िया मरुपक्कम दान अद उड़िया इन्वर्स मूवमेंट इन भगवान कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर इन्वर्स इन राल तलेगिराना मेल इरुंद कीर्ति इरक्कम अदन उड़िया वेलिपाड़ अगतान नम यरके ए पार्किन्तर यन्नदाल इंदर सचिदानंद उन्दर यदि उन्दर अदन उड़िया यदि नेले इरुकिन्तर दो अदन उल तन्नी मरित्त कोड कोण्डिरिकिन्तर इधरान नेले इरु कोण नम्मल उड़िया इरुमय इरुमय विलहिल कानपड़म तुंबम वली इधर लामी अदन अदन फिन्नाल इरुपदे एदन पातोन सचिदानंद दान इंदर मनदन उन्दर यरके इन आल दान आलपड़िकिन्तर अनाल अवन निन्तत्त कोण्डिरकरमारी अवनूड़िया सुधंधरमान अवनूड़िया सोंदर विरुप्पुवर्पिन पेरिल अवनाल सैल बढ़ा मुड़ियाद सुधंधरमाह इल्ले यरके दान मनदन आलु किन्तर अंदर यरके एदन पातो अभिनीना अद दान उन्दर इंदर माया इनकिन्तर डी इल्लूशन पावर ऑफ़ डी लॉर्ड इरेवनाल तोटरविक्कपट्र ओर माया माया सत्तीन ओर कईपावया अगतान मनदन सैल बढ़िकिन्तर अद तान भगवान इनक्को कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर कीते लिंद भगवान अदे कोरिप्पिट्टा कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर मनदन उन्दर अंदर कीर्ति इरुक्कोड़िया अंदर माया सत्तीन ओर कईपावया अगतान अवन सैल बढ़िकिन्तर अवन निन्तत्त कोण्डिरकरमारी अवन ओर सुधंधर प्रजयाग इरुपदिले ओर यरके इन अडिमया अगतान सैल बढ़िकिन्तर अद इरुंद मनदन विडुपड़ा वेंटम इन राल अवन तन्नूल इरुक्कोड़िया अंदर इरैसत्तीय अवन उनर्व पूरमाह इनय वेंटम अप्पोर्ड दान अवन एजमाननाह सैल बढ़ा मुड़ियम अभिनिर्दर एप्पोर्ड दान अवनाल आल मारी इनय मुड़ियम इन राल अवन तन उनर्व नले ले मेल नोक्की सल्लवेंटम कीनोक्की सल्लम्बुर्द अवनाल इंदर इरैसत्तीय ओर इनय मुड़ियाद मेल नोक्की सल्लम्बुर्द दान अवनाल इनय मुड़ियम इनकिन्तर करत्ते भगवान कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर ओन्रे मेल ओन्रे मेल नोक्की सल्लवेंटम अदरकम मुन मनदन तन उल्स एंड्र तन उल्ले इरुकिन्तर अंदर इरैवन ओर इरैवन ओर तन्ने आयक्य पड़त्ता वेंटम इव इरण्डमेय सहयवेंटम इन र भगवान कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर डी मेल नोक्की सल्लम्बुर्द एन्ना एर्पड़िकिन्तर एर्पड़िकिन्तर द इन राल मनदन तन उनर्व नले मेल उल्ला अंदर सुपर कॉन्शियंट अदिलर्क कोड अधिमान अधिमानस निले उड़न तन्नै उनर्व उड़न तन्नै इनय त्त कोल्हिन्तर इंदर अधिमानस निले अंग दान डी डिवाइन माया इनकिन्तर अंदर सत्ती इरुकिन्तर इधर दान तन्ने वैत्त कोण्डिरकिन्तर अद दान डी कीर्ति उल्ला डी लॉयर माया मनदन अरियामय ले सैल यवार सैल बढ़म अंदर सत्ती अद दान इनक्के कीर्ति उल्ला डी लॉयर माया इन र अरे किन्तर मेल उल्ला अधिमानत्तिल इरुक्कोड़िया अंदर अंदर सत्ती उन्दर नम डिवाइन माया इन र भगवान अरे किन्तर डी डिवाइन माया दान मेल इरुक्कोड़िया डी डिवाइन माया अद दान कीर्ति इरुक्कोड़िया अंदर लॉयर माया अदे अदन उड़िया सैल पाटे तीर्माणिकिन्तर द इन र भगवान कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर डी लॉयर माया इन र कीर्ति इरुक्कोड़िया अंदर कीर्ति नेले इरुदान डी सचिदानंदावीन सचिदानंदावी मर्पवयहलाह तोंडरकोड़िया यदि नेले इरु कानपड़िकिन्तर अनाल मनदन उड़िया उनर्व नले ले मेल 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 वांगी सल्लम्बुर्द कीर्ति नेले इल यवेल मर्पवयहलाह इरुकिन्तर नो इरुकिन्तर नो अवै मनदन एक कडंद मनद एक कडंद अधिमानस निले अड़ेयम्बुर्द अवै सचिदानंदावीन ओर उर्दी पाटने अंग वल्यपड़त्तिकिन्तर डिनाइल डिनाइल ऑफ़ सचिदानंद बिकम्स अफॉर्मेशन ऑफ़ सचिदानंद वन मिनट वन मिनट सॉरी सॉरी डी कीर्ति नेले इल सचिदानंदावी यवे मर्पवयहलाह तोंडिकिन्तर नो तोंडिकिन्तर नो अवै अनैत्यमी डी लॉयर माया ले उन्दर एप्परी तोंडिकिन्तर ने तोंडिकिन्तर द इन राल अनैत्यमे सचिदानंदावी यदि नेले इरु सचिदानंदावी मर्पवयहलाम तोंडिकिन्तर डी डिवाइन माया ले पातो अभिनीना डी सुपर माइंड ले पातोन एल्लामी सचिदानंदावी उर्दी पड़त्तिकिन्तर नवाह तोंडिकिन्तर आदलाल भगवान एन्ना कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर इन राल डी लॉयर नेचर ले इरुंदाल कोड डी लॉयर नेचर ले कोड सैल बॉडगल अनैत्यमे इंदर ओयर हायर नेचर ले उन्दर दान उर्दी से तीर्माणिक पड़िकिन्तर अभिनिर्दर डीज लॉयर नेचर वर्क्स आउट व्हाट इस विल्ड एंड नोन इन डी हायर नेचर डी डिवाइन माया ले एल्लामी उन्दर तीर्माणिक पड़िकिन्तर अवैले दान कीर्ति उल्ला डी लॉयर नेचर ले डी लॉयर माया इन र कोरप कोरप पड़िकिन्तर डी लॉयर नेचर कीर्ति यरके इल सैल बढ़त्ता पड़िकिन्तरना इनकिन्तर करत्ते भगवान कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर डी नाम मिर्क कोड इन डी विलकम उन्दर ओर माय ओर पैयान तोटरंगले उड़ेद यदि अंदर पैयान तोटरंगले एर्पड़त्तिकिन्तर द इन राल अदुकोड़ अंदर भगवान एन्ना कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर इन राल अंदर इल्लूशन पावर डी इल्लूशन पावर एन्पदे ओर माय तोटरत्तन एर्पड़त्ता कोड अंदर सत्ती अदुम अंदर इरै न्यानत्ते सेर्न्द सत्ती दान कीर्ति उल्ला अंदर पैयान तोटरंगले एर्पड़त्तिकिन्तर द अभिनिर्दर अदनाल एदकाह भगवान इनक्को कोरिप्पडिकिन्तर इन राल डी विलकम एन्पदे माय इनकिन्तर करत्ते इनक्के भगवान वरिकिन्तर नाम एदे माय इन निन्तत्त कोण्डिटिकिन्तरोमो अदुकोड़ मेल उल्ला डी इरै सत्ती आल दान अंदर 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 माय तोटरमम अंदर सत्ती इन आल दान उर्वाक पड़िकिन्तर द अभिनिर्दर यदि अंदर मेल उल्ला सत्ती इन राल अंदर इल्लूशन पावर उन्दर यंग इरुकिन्तर द इन राल It is the truth consciousness. That is the truth consciousness. That is the ignorance. That is the ignorance of the lower nature. Why is that? What does God ask for? That is why, in the world, all we see is a human being. We cannot see a human being in this world. When is the moisture of the human body? When is the moisture of the human body? It is the super mind. Then it comes to the full consciousness. In that way, it can be made. What does God ask for? This is the first level. The first level is the selfless, selfless, selfless state. This is the first difficulty. The second difficulty of the human body is that. Humans are not aware of others. Because of that, every human being has a different mind, a different spirit, a different world. He is not aware. But he is not aware of one part of the human being. Everyone is a separate person. That is why, what does God ask for? Humans are not aware of each other. The third is that the sinful beings of the human being are not aware of each other. What is the judgment of others? His actions, his deeds. These are the same as the same of others. All of them are a rough mental construction. A man with a brain is a brain. This is not a real knowledge. A true knowledge of others. There is no such thing as a true knowledge of others. When is there a true knowledge of the human being? When is the knowledge of others? Only by conscious identity. A brain. Others can make you self-aware. Conscious identity is that. We change as others. That is the conscious identity. That is the direct knowledge. That is the knowledge of others. A good knowledge of others. That is the direct knowledge. Now we are learning about others. This is indirect knowledge. There is no knowledge. This is a knowledge of the human being. This is a practical understanding. Practical understanding is necessary for our future lives. But this is a relationship. How is it? The relations between the people. This is a relationship. A relationship that is not established. When is it necessary? It is the knowledge of others. When is it a perfect relation with others? A small proportion of the relationship. Only by conscious unity. Conscious unity is unity of souls. That is the conscious unity. Our friends, sympathy created by mental understanding. Sympathy is a kind. This is what God asks for. Because this is a relationship. The relationship with others. It is a knowledge that is important. Why is that? Every human being has a body, a mind. It is present in other bodies. When the seeds are planted, the seeds are planted. The relations are troubled. But when is it a real unity? When is it a real unity? Then the relations are established. What is the difference? When is it necessary? It is a precarious condition. When is it necessary? It is the knowledge of others. What does God ask for? When is it a relationship? When is it a relationship? When is it a relationship? Conscious unity with one, with others. It is a relationship. Because when we are in the relationship. We have a proper understanding of the sinful beings. We are united with other human beings. Because of that, we are in the relationship. This is when we are in the normal state. We cannot make the relationship. Because of that, we are in the forest. Our ego, the self of the ego, is confused. We are in the forest. We cannot make the relationship. Because of that, we are in the body, mind, life. It is the body, mind, life that we are in. It is the unity in diversity that we are in. The world is that. When is it possible to make the sinful state? It is the body, mind, life that we are in. Let us start from paragraph 10. Madam, are you reading?
I am reading, sir. Before I go, I told you.
Yes, please, share.
The therapist told us how to bring harmony. Many people came to our village. So they told us how to bring harmony. We think positively, we think negatively. So all positive thinking, we should put blue on the right side. Left side, negative things. We think of our thoughts. We think of negative things. Left side, red color. You divide yourself into two parts, right and left. Right, blue color with positive things in you. And on your left, the negative things in red color. And you take minimum ten minutes. Quietly, bring all your positiveness before you. All of that is brought. So this is me. Clear. And negative things are brought. Then see, what is more or less known to you? Or is there less? You should analyze yourself. Who else can help? So, what is the negative? Can you change it positively? You see. You just noticed. Nothing is in writing. Because there is paper. You went to your school. So, how can I change the negative to the positive? I can change to this direction. You can change it. Before that, what should you do? Put two together. Put one in a court. Put one in a blue, one in a red. Put two together. At one point, you will see they will merge together. That becomes your whole. First, you should accept that. Positive, negative, there is me. They are not different from me. You should accept that. Then you take over the negative to change into positive. You can change it positively. Slowly take it up. First, you have to work for two weeks. Daily, you sit for ten minutes. You saw me sit. First, you will start accepting yourself. That is the big problem. Because of that, digestion is the problem. So, the digestion problem is solved. You do this, accept yourself. Just two to three weeks. Do this. Then go to the relationship of the other person. Who is the person you want to be more harmonious? So, the same thing. Imagine all that person's positive things on your right side as blue. Because blue is the peaceful color. And red is the agitative color. So, this red is agitating me, in me, and with others. I think of their feelings. So, in the red, you have to change it. Then you take both these. You take both these blue and red together of the other person. Merge them at one point, they will merge and accept that person is like that. When the person is like that, you will change your thoughts about him. Your opinions, perceptions. All of them can be changed. That is the main point. Then you, yourself will work in you, not in him or in her or the other person. But you will change yourself to accept. So automatically, when you do this. The changes will happen in the other person also. Because all these workings will work on the other person also. You saw me. I know very well. I am starting it. Thank you, sir. Thank you. This is very good.
Is this a regular therapist or based therapy?
Oh, hello. He is from Orin.
Oh, okay. That is right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, madam.
I am a student. Thank you, sir, for this opportunity.
Thank you, madam. Thank you. Thank you. This is a very good technique. This is a mother. Many speeches, talks, they talk about it. We don't know what is the concept of the Ulknoki. Some people don't know. This is a little. Some people don't know. Ulknoki, introspection, this is not available to many people. That is why, they don't know. They are totally ignorant. We see it at a normal level. That is number one. First, they are looking inward. That is a big journey. Once they start. That is the first step. Many problems will be solved. The second is. The mother says. Every human being has a higher self. Everybody has a higher self. Every person has a higher self. We have a search list. When we search. In our mind, thinking, spirit, spirit, mind, spirit. This is the three. When we search. All of them have the higher self. Bring it to the tribunal of the justice of your highest self. All of them. All of them. If the higher self accepts it. That is all. The higher self is the highest part of ourselves. Is it? It is present in all bodies. It is present in all bodies. That is a judge. Before that, all of them. If it is accepted. If it is not. That is what they say. This job has to be done within us. This exercise is twenty-four by seven process. This is very careful. Every machine, we have to watch. Now, how do I behave? Everyone knows. I behave how I think. You don't know. That is what I know. Is it? That is what the mother says. Yes, please, talk. But I have emotions. What are my feelings? That is what I know. That is what the mother says. The higher self, the higher law. Before that, you have to accept. Or reject. You have to do this. That is what they say. Naturally, we will be able to reject whatever which is not acceptable to our higher self. That is what the mother says. Many mothers talk about it. Because usually, we think of our life. Our circumstances. We want a good life. We think of that as a problem. But the mother says. It is present in you. All of them have solutions. In the field of work. Now, everyone says. There is a poem. Everyone blames the world. What is the solution? A single man. It is present in your body. That is your body. That is what you do. When you do it. That is what you do. That is what you do. You are contributing to the whole. In a small way, you can contribute to the whole. But everyone does it. Then we can remove the negative aspects. Where is the work? It is the work of the family. The therapist, since he is a mother. I think that is what the therapist said. Because you agree with the mother.
They are followers of the mother. But this is very practical. It is very clear. The mother says, I will leave it at home.
I understand. You said correctly. If you customize it. They will understand. They will implement it easily. Correct.
As the therapist said. The mother says. Why can't I follow? I finished the class. But when the problem is solved. If a solution is found, I can follow.
Yes, correct.
Sir, Rangaraty.
Yes, please.
Sir, actually, Eugene Blulair. A very psychiatrist. International psychiatrist. He was born in eighteen fifty-seven. He was in his thirtieth, thirtieth year. He is senior to Sigmund Freud. He is very senior. He is the first to say schizophrenia. The spinal cord disease. Now it is bipolar disease. This is called schizophrenia. He is German. He is the spinal cord disease. Now it is bipolar disease. He said that. He has two kinds of diseases. Doctor Jekyll and Mr. Hyde are famous. You all know. Doctor Jekyll is very helpful. He helps everyone. The last one is Doctor Jekyll, the last one is Mr. Hyde. Why do I say that? A lot of people have heard of Sigmund Freud. They are wrong. Of course, a lot of people talk about it. I just wanted to point out. You said, the mother said. The mother has a very good quote. Do not comment, do not criticize, do not judge. It is not your lookout. Very good quote. Do not comment, do not criticize, do not judge. It is not your lookout. Thank you, sir.
Correct. Thanks, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Are you reading, sir?
Yes, I am reading, madam.
Paragraph ten. The third difficulty is the division between force and consciousness in the evolutionary existence. There is first the division which has been created by the evolution itself. In its three successive formations of matter, life and mind. Each with its own law of working. The life is at war with the body. It attempts to force it to satisfy life's desires, impulses, satisfaction and demands. From its limited capacity, what could only be possible to an immortal and divine body. And the body enslaved and tyrannized over suffers. And is in constant revolt against the demands made upon it by the life. The mind is at war with both. Sometimes it helps the life against the body. Sometimes restrains the vital urge and seeks to protect the corporeal frame from life's desires, passions and overdriving energies. It also seeks to possess the life and turn its energy to the mind's own ends. To the utmost joys of the mind's own activity. To the satisfaction of mental, acidic, emotional, emotional aims and their fulfillment in human existence. And the life too finds itself enslaved and misused and is in frequent insurrection against the ignorant half-wise tyrant seated above it. This is the war of our members which the mind cannot satisfactorily resolve. Because it has to deal with the problem insoluble to it. The aspiration of an immortal being in a mortal life and body. It can only arrive at a long succession of compromises or end in an abandonment, abandonment of the problem. Either by submission with the materialist to the mortality of our apparent being. Or with the ascetic and the religionist by the rejection and condemnation of the earthly life. And withdrawal to happier and easier fields of existence. But the true solution lies in finding the principle beyond mind of which immortality is the law. And in conquering by it the mortality of our existence.
Thank you, madam. Thank you very much. We can go to the explanation.
Sir, are you reading?
Yes, please.
The third difficulty is the division between the force and consciousness in the evolutionary existence. In man, there is a big gap between his knowledge, his awareness and his will. He may have knowledge but not have the will to do it. He knows something is wrong but he may not have the will to stop doing it. Or he may have the will but not the knowledge to do it. At the level of matter, it is the force that dominates. The consciousness evolves in the. The consciousness evolves in the formation of life and mind. There is division created by the evolution itself in body, that means matter, mind and life. Each has its own law of working. Life is at war with the body. Life forces body to satisfy its vital desires, impulses and satisfactions. All these things it demands from the limited capacity of the body. Only an immortal and divine body could satisfy such demands. The body is being made a slave of life, subjected to its tyranny and undergoes suffering. It revolves against life. The mind is at war with both life and body. Sometimes it helps the life against body. Sometimes it restrains at the vital urge of life and protects the body from life's desires and passions. Sometimes it uses life to its own ends to fulfill its satisfactions, aesthetic and emotional aims. Life too finds itself being made a slave and misused and is in it revolves against the half-wise tyrant, that means mind seated above it.
Thank you, madam. Thank you very much, thank you. There is a very powerful question, my God. Because the problems of the war. What is the reason for the war? The consciousness and the force. This is the two sides. A strange situation. Imperfect voice. Between consciousness and force. This is the reason for the war. In the three questions. Because of this, the same situation. The consciousness and consciousness force. If the two are in the same situation, the three questions will arise. The first question is that there is no fixed nānām. His male body is his desire. All his desires are fixed. Nānām is not present. This is the first difficulty. The second difficulty is that he doesn't know anything about her. Other sinful desires are not present. Why? He is a single man. He is a single man. He is a single man, a single body, a single prayer. All the other ones are different. They are not the same. He is not present. He is not present. He is not present. This is the second difficulty. Third difficulty. The third difficulty is that in the Parinamalachi. In the Parinamalachi. The first step is the first step. And the first step is the war. The mind is present. He is present. He is present. He is present. He is present. The matter is present. The body is present. His war. Prayer. War is present. His mind is present. He is present. So, three situations are present. The Parinamalachi. Body, body, war, body. He is present. That is why the three are one by one. He is present. The life is at war with the body. It attempts to force it to satisfy life's desires, impulses, satisfactions and demands from its limited capacity. What could only be possible to an immortal and divine body. And the body enslaved and tyrannized over suffers and is in constant revolt against the demands made upon it by the life. Oh. The body is that body has a capacity. But sometimes our desires. To do a project. What is it? The body is used for a lot of things. Why? Because of our needs. We use it incorrectly. It is designed for the soul. That is the reason. Many people watch it. Sometimes sportsmen watch it. We need to win in a competition. They are extremely strained. They use the body. They dominate the vital force. They use the body. Many times, when a project is completed. Very hard. It is a project. The body is used. It is used. That is why my God says that our prayer. The body is one by one. Because of this, we need to practice our needs. The body is a person. That is why we need to practice our needs. The body is not a person. My God, my God. My God says that. That is why the body is that the body is a project. It is a spiritual project. Tyranny is a spiritual project. What is it? A spiritual project. You use it. Your body is a spiritual project. The body is a project. That is why it is a project. That is why it is a project. This is the war, body, prayer. The body is the right one. My God says that. The body is that body is a prayer, a body. The body is the right one. Why? Sometimes we have a dream. We need to do a project. The body is not used. The body is used. In this way, some time we need to do a project. The body is used. That is why my God says that. Body is a body. Prayer is a prayer. The body is the right one. Body is present. Some time, body is present. Prayer is present. Body is used. We need to do a project. But the body is used. But we need to do a project. So, what is body saying? The body is saying that we need to do a project. The body is used. Body is present. This is a project. Body is present. Some time, our body is a project. Our body. Because we saw in our prayer. Some time, passions are present. But that is not a good thing. That is what is happening. Our bodies are damaged. So, body is present. No, you are doing it wrong. That is why our body is present. What is happening? Body, war, body. He has three sides. A proper mood. That is what my God says. My God. My God says something. What is he saying? The mind is that for a long time, a reasonable mind is present. Our body exercises. In this way, our vital exercises are present. This is a person's desire. It is present. The prayer is a very good project. In this way, the body is present. Body is present. That's what they say, my mother says. Now, the body is present. This is that our mind is not used. We can't do it. Because body is present. The body is present. In this way, our vital desires are present. Whether the body is used. We will pay attention to it. But body is present. So, some time, body is present. The body is present. That is what my God says. But in the same time, three are one by one. In the same way, it is present. It is present. What do you think? Three are present. It is present. A person's war. My God says that. Let's go to the next part.
Say, sir.
Yes, say, madam.
This is the this is the war between our body, mind and life which our mind cannot satisfactorily solve because mind is incapable of solving it. Mind cannot fulfill the aspiration of an immortal being in a mortal life and body. Mind can only arrive at a long succession of compromise. It can abandon this problem by taking two stents. It can submit itself to the contention of the materialized that our body being made of matter is subject to destruction or it can submit itself to the anti and religionist view that one can withdraw to happier and easier fields of existence by condemning and rejecting this earthly life. The true solution lies in principles beyond mind that is the supermind. Only supermind can conquer the mortality of our existence. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, madam. Thank you. The body is that the solution is not available. See, my God says that. It can only arrive at a long succession of compromises or end in an abandonment of the problem either by submission with the materialist to the mortality of our apparent being or with ascetic and the religionist by the rejection and condemnation of the earthly life and withdrawal to happier and easier fields of existence. What is the question? The body, body, prayer. If the body is only a person. The body cannot reach it. Because it is a problem for every person. Many people have a problem with the body. The body has a lot of injuries. But there are diseases in the body. Some time, the body has injuries. Prayer is present. Depression is present. This is a problem for every person. The body is a good person. That is why the body is present. In this way, prayer is present. A good person is not present. It is not present. It cannot survive in the future. That is why the three sides are present. That is why the body cannot reach it. My God says that. Why? Why the mood is present? Every one of us has a aspiration. The aspiration of the body is that it is present. Every person has a body. There is a six. The six is the aspiration of the body. Every person is present. The immortal being is the name of the body. Every person is present. The six is present. This is a project. A project. Body, body, prayer. But a person who is present in a bad mood. War, body, the aspiration of the body. That is what my God says. That is why body is present. A compromise is made. For every person. A permanent solution is not possible. Sometimes, a temporary solution is made. Man can, mind can only arrive at a long succession of compromises. That is why the body is present. Why the body is present? One. What is it? The materialist is there, yeah? Materialist is that they are all present. But the matter is present. That is why the matter is present. It is present. That is why the body is present. Otherwise, the people who are evil. A desire. The world is A world of evil. This is the second, world rejecting attitude. One is a materialistic, materialistic attitude. Otherwise, what is it? A world of evil. That is what the body is. The body is a bad mood. It is not possible to improve. That is why a compromise is made. It is present. But where is the real truth? The body is present. Why? On the supernatural level, everything is present. There is. எல்லாமே வந்து நம்மளோடிய வாழ்வின் நிலையெற்ற தன்மை அங்கு அது அங்கு வெல்லப்படுகின்றது. மனதன் வந்து அழியாத தன்மை அடைகின்றான் அதிமானதில. அதனால தான் வந்து மனம் வந்து நிலையில் வந்து மனதினால் எதை அடையமுடியும் இல்லையாது அதிமான நிலையில் மனதன் அடைகின்றான் என்கின்ற கர்த்தை இங்கு கொரிப்படிக்கின்றார்.
சர் இங்க அவர் சொல்ற இஸியர் பில்ஸ் ஆப் எக்ஸிஸ்டன்ஸ் நதி எது சர்? துரந்துட்டு ஓடுறது சொல்றாரா?
ஆ அது தான் சொல்றார் அது தான் சொல்றார். நிர்வானிக் நிர்வானிக் ஸ்டேட் நோக்கி போறது. அதாவது எல்லா பிளைப்பில் தோண்டுக்கொடிய பிரச்சனைகள் கல்லா வந்து தீர்வு காணாம நம்ப வந்து எங்கேயும் காட்டுக்கோ எங்கேயும் மனச்சுக்கு பை நம்ப வந்து மைக் கொஞ்சம் பின்னாடி கொஞ்சம் ஆப்பனேடும் என்றால். நம்ப உலகத்தை உலகத்தை வாழ்வைத்து வெறுத்துவிட்டு கண்டு கண்டுத்து வாழ்வில் இருந்து விளைகிரிச்சு செலுதல். விளைகி செலுததுனால அவங்களுக்கு மாத்தன அமைதி கிடைக்கின்றது. அவங்களுக்கு மாத்தன ஒரு சந்தோஷம் கிடைக்கின்றது இதைதான் பக்வான் சொல்கின்றார். ஒன் கேன் வித்ரா டு ஹேப்பியர் அண் இஸியர் பில்ஸ் ஆப் எக்ஸிஸ்டன்ஸ் பை கண்டெம்னிங் அண் ரிஜக்ட்டிங் திஸ் எர்ட்லீ லைவ். வாழ்வில் இருந்துகொண்டு போராடுவது என்றது ஒன்னு. இல்ல வாழ்விலே நான் தனிமையில் இருக்கறேன். அந்த நிலையை நாட்டுவது தான் பக்வானிங்க சொல்கின்றார்.
தேங்கு சர் தேங்கு.
பேரக்ராப் இவன் போலாம்.
ஓகே தேங்கு சர். பேரக்ராப் இவன். பட் தேரி ஸ்வோ அல்லோஸ்ஸு தத் பந்தமெண்டல் டிவிஷன் விதின் பிடிவு நேச்சர் அண்ட் கான்சியஸ் பீங்க் விச் இஸ் தி ஒரிஜினல் காஸ் ஆப் திஸ் இன்கேபாசிடி. நாட் ஒன்லி இஸ் தத் அட் விஷன் பிடிவு நேச்சர் அண்ட் பிரிஸிகல் பீங்க் பட் இச் அவ்தம் இஸ் ஆஸ்ஸூ டிவேட்டெட் அகெஞ்ச் இட்செல். தே காபேசிடி ஆப் தி பாடி இஸ் லெஸ் டான் தி காபேசிடி ஆப் தி இன்ஸ்ட்ரிங்டிவ் சோல் ஆர் கான்சியஸ் பீங்க். தி பிரிஸிகல் புருஷா விதினிட். தே காபேசிடி ஆப் தி வைத்தல் பில்ஸ் லெஸ் டான் தி காபேசிடி ஆப் தி இம்ப்புல்சிவ் சோல். தி வைத்தல் கான்சியஸ் பீங்க் ஆர் புருஷா விதினிட். தே காபேசிடி ஆப் தி மெண்டல் என்னர்ஜி லெஸ் டான் தி காபேசிடி ஆப் தி இன்டிலெக்ட்யுவல் அண் இமோஷனல் சோல். தி மெண்டல் புருஷா விதினிட். பார் தி சோல் இஸ் தி இன்னர் கான்சியஸ்னஸ் விச் அஸ்பெர்ட் டு இஸ் ஓன் கம்ப்லீட் செல்ப் ரிலைzation அண் தேர்போ ஆல்வேஸ் எக்ஸீஸ் தி இன்டிவிஜியல் பாமேஷன் ஆப் தி மோமென்ட் அண்ட் பில்ஸ் விச் ஹஸ் தேகிங் இஸ் பாஸ் இன் தி பாமேஷன் இஸ் ஆல்வேஸ் புஸ்ட் பை இஸ் சோல் டு தத் விச் இஸ் அப்னார்மல் டு தி போய்ஸ். ட்ரான்செந்டென்ட் ஆப் திட். தேச் கான்சிட்டில் புஸ்ட் இத் ஆஸ்மாச் ட்ரப்பு இன் அஞ்சரிங் மோர் இன் இவால்விங் தம்த் பெர்ஸ் பிரெஷன் டு ய கேர்ட்டர் காபேசிடி. இன் ட்ரைing் டு புல்லில் தி மேன்ஸ் ஆப் திஸ் ட்ரிப்பு சோல். இத் இஸ் டிஸ்ட்ராக்டெட் அண் டிரிவன் டு செட் இன்ஸ்ட்ரிங் அகெஞ்ச் இன்ஸ்ட்ரிங். இம்ப்புல்ஸ் அகெஞ்ச் இம்ப்புல்ஸ் இமோஷன் அகெஞ்ச் இமோஷன். ஐடியோ அகெஞ்ச் ஐடியோ. சாதிஸ்வையிங் திஸ் டினையிங் தத். தேன் ரிபெண்டிங் அண் ரிட்டர்னிங் ஆன் வாட் இத் ஆஸ்டான் அட்ஜஸ்ட்டிங் கம்பன்சேட்டிங் ரீஅட்ஜஸ்ட்டிங் அட் இன்பினிடம். பட் நாட் அரைவிங் அட் அன்ய பிரிச்பிப்பு ஆப் யுனிடி. அண் இன் தி மைன் அகேன் தி கான்சியஸ் பாவர் தான் ஸ்டுட் ஹார்மனைஸ் அண் யுனாய்ட் இஸ் நாட் ஒன்லி லிமிடெட் இன் இஸ் நாலிக் அண் இன் இஸ் வில். பட் தி நாலிக் அண் தி வில் ஆர் ஡ிஸ்பரேட் அண் ஆபன் அட் ஡ிஸ்கார்ட். தே பிரிச்பிப்பு ஆப் யுனிடி இஸ் அப்பவு இன்தி ஸ்பென்மைன். பார் தேர் அலோன் இஸ் தி கான்சியஸ் யுனிடி ஆப் ஆர் டைவர்சிடி. தேர் அலோன் வில் அண் நாலிக் ஆர் இகுல் அண் இன் பொர்஫ெக்ட் ஹார்மனி. தேர் அலோன் கான்சியஸ்னஸ் அண் பில்ஸ் அரைவ் அட் தத் திவைன் எக்வேஷன். தேங்கு சர்.
தேங்கு மேடம் தேங்கு வேர் முச் தேங்கு. சோ மோதல்ல நம்ப வந்து தே கான்சியஸ்னஸ் அண் பில்ஸ். இவை இரண்டுக்கும் இடையில் ஏற்படக்கூடிய தசம நிலை அற்ற சமநிலை இல்லாத நிலையில் ஏற்படக்கூடிய இந்த மூன்று விதமான திபிக்கட்டிஸ் சப்பாத்தோ. ஒன்னு மனதன் தன்னை முழுமையா அறியாமல் இருத்தல். தன்னைப் பற்றி ஒன்லி மேல்புற ஜீவனில் வாழ்ந்துகொண்டு தன்னோடிய ஆர் பகுதிகளை மனதன் தன்னைப் பற்றியும் முழுமையா அறியாமல் இருத்தல். இரண்டாவதுல மனதன் தன்னைப் பற்றிய அறியாமல் இருப்பது மட்டுமல்ல. தன் சக மனதர்களைப் பற்றியும் ஒரு ஆரையுறையான புருதலில் தான் மனதன் வாழ்கின்றான். ஒரு சரியான த கான்சியஸ் ஐடன்டிடி. உணர்வு ஒன்று உணர்வு நிலையில் பொருந்திய அந்த ஒற்றுமை இருப்பதில்ல எல்லாமே மனதைச் சார்ந்த மேம்போக்கான புருதல்கள் உறவுகள் அமைகின்றன. இது இரண்டாவது. மூன்றாவது நிலையில் என்ன பாத்தோம் அப்படின்னா ஒரு மனதனுக்குள்ளேயே பாத்தோம் அப்படின்னா இந்த மனம் வாழ்வு உடல். இவை மூன்றுக்கும் இடையிலேயே முறன்பாடுகள் ஏற்படுகின்றன. போராட்டங்கள் ஏற்படுகின்றன. அந்த போராட்டங்களை மனதின் மூலம் தீருகாண முடிவதில்ல. இதெல்லாம் வந்து மூன்று விதமான டிபிக்கட்டிஸ் நம்ப பாத்தோம். நாங்காவது உங்கள் கர்த்தை பக்வான் கொரிப்படிக்கின்றார். என்ன கொரிப்படிக்கின்றார் என்றால் இந்த பிளவு பிரிவு இருந்தது. தே கான்சியஸ்னஸ் அந்த சக்தி கான்சியஸ்னஸ் பில்ஸ். இவை இரண்டுக்கும் மாத்திரம் ல கான்சியஸ் பில்ஸ் கொந்து கான்சியஸ்னஸ் பில்ஸுக்கும் தி கான்சியஸ் பீங்க் எக்ஸிஸ்டன்ஸ். அவர் இரண்டுக்கும் இடையிலேயும் அந்த பிரிவிரிக்கின்றது என்று பக்வான் கொரிப்படிக்கின்றார். என்ன இதில் என்ன பக்வான் கொரிப்படுவது என்ன என்றால் மோதல்ல சொன்னது வந்து கான்சியஸ்னஸ் அண்ட் கான்சியஸ்னஸ் பில்ஸ். உணர்வு நிலை இந்த உணர்வு நிலை உணர்வு நிலை ஒட்டிய அந்த சக்தியின் செயல்படு.
of the moment the force which has taken its voice in the formation is always pushed by its soul it is pushed to that which is abnormal to that voice and transcendent beyond of it since it is thus constantly pushed it has much trouble in responding to the demand at the same time it is evolving more from the present to greater capacity. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you. This paragraph tells about manam, pranamayam, kudal these three elements are existing together, one by one, in which they are functioning but if you ask what is the meaning of this three three elements, any one of them in which they are, any body, mind, or life these three elements all of them are experiencing one by one, all of them are experiencing why is this happening? the body, we take this body in the physical aspect there is a conscious aspect conscious existence the conscious existence is the physical person so in nature, in the earth ah prakriti is nature is prakriti the prakriti, prakriti is prakriti is born the prakriti is what is causing a conscious being, a person this is a personal meaning prakriti is every prakriti, prakriti is born this is a personal meaning this person is in three levels physical level, physical person the white person the mental person that is why God tells us this inner physical, inner vital, inner mental we are like a bird a bird is alive but we have a soul, a conscious aspect the conscious aspect is our soul element, the physical aspect the physical person, God asks this is the soul element the soul element, we see its capacity is low but if we see the body's capacity if we compare its capacity the body's capacity is less this is number one the second one is our pranamayam the pranamayam, it has a vital person a soul aspect the soul aspect, every vital force, pranamayam, is a conscious being, vital conscious being, or vital person if we see its capacity our pranasakti's capacity, it is just like this the next level is our mental level the mental level, we go an intellectual and emotional soul, the mental person the mental person, our manadinsacalboard, all of them, is a mental person the mental energy, capacity of the mental energy, we see this is our mental person, its capacity is lower than this so our body, mind, life, these three all of them, all of them, a soul element, a person the person, when it is flowing the person, its capacity is always just like this why is it just like this? the soul is it is a whole mind, soul is inner consciousness it is always a divine aspect, soul is a divine spark, divine aspects it is always, its aura, whatever it is, aura for your, for your, for your understanding complete self-realization for your understanding the soul aspect, it is always, it is always, it is always, aura that is why, it is, it is, now, in this world if something is wrong it is always, it is always, it is always what is the reason? It is soul, its function is like this, it is always, aura if something is wrong it is always, it is always, it is always God, what is the meaning of this? it always exceeds the individual formation of the moment in this world, what is a formation, a message, it is always, it is always why is it happening? It is progress if you have a burning fire, it is a desire there is progress, evolutionary progress evolutionary progress, it is always, this desire is always, aura that is why, the force which has taken its voice in the formation is always pushed by its soul whatever the fire, the desire the desire, it is always, it is always if it is, its normal capacity is it is, it is, it is, it is, it is it is pushed to that which is abnormal to that voice and transcendent beyond it that is why, the desire, the need flowing, the actual capacity these two elements, it is always, it is always the meaning of God this is, many people, many people have heard in ashram, we see the priest, he was in the past, he was, his yoga, the vital level, very ah born for a long time, he was busy, he could not eat, very he did very much what is the reason? The pranamayam, his soul force, is flowing his yoga, the vital level, is higher how, vital level, the soul is born God, he is asking, this is not allowed, we need balance, in this yoga one aspect, only, only, one aspect, cannot flow we need balance, this is not allowed he says, you will have problems later, he went to he went to his son, Anandrapadesh, he said he had many problems, he had many, he had many what is the reason? in any place, the soul aspect is pushed the sakti is flowing the desire is there if there is no difference, this problem is happening this is, this is, what is the reason? this is a fundamental problem there is a fundamental division between force of nature and the conscious being which is the original cause of this capacity force of nature, prakriti conscious being, a person in any level, a person, prakriti, is flowing the division, it is possible, this problem, God asks
In this, in this, what is the reason? the person, he is talking about he is working alone, a human, going to the next level
Yes, correct, yes, every level, physical level, vital level, and mental level it is always, aura, it is flowing it is impossible to reach its outward aspect, its force, prakriti its aura, it is not possible to reach of course, no doubt, that is why God, he says, a sentence, he says ah, the, what is he saying? I will read it, one minute for the soul is the inner consciousness which aspires to its own complete self-realization the soul is inner consciousness, it is always, aura which aspires to its own complete self-realization and therefore always exceeds the individual formation of the moment the soul is, in which it is it is, it is, it is, it is, it is because soul aspiration is like this, other than if a divine being is there, the soul is completely fulfilled we are in a drama, we are in a drama, the soul is aspiration if there is a gap, it is only possible that we always exceeds the individual formation of the moment if something is wrong that is why, God, therefore always exceeds the individual formation of the moment and the force which has taken its voice in the formation is always pushed by its soul to that which is abnormal to the voice that is why, the fire, the fire the fire, its capacity, is the fire but if there is a desire, what is the reason? it is a big desire, its aura it is higher, higher, it is flowing it is, it is, it is, it is which is abnormal to the voice, it is, it is, it is it is not changed, it is, it is ah, transcendent of it, what is it? it is in the dark, if I am a man, I can flow suppose, higher level, if I flow, there is no death that is why, I am here but what is happening, why is it happening? thus constantly pushed, it has much trouble in answering this is not allowed, but how? more in evolving from the present to a greater capacity the fire, it is evolving in Parinamaalachila, this is very important it is always, this imbalance is there if it is completed, the balance is reached this, 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 this imbalance, it is balanced the imbalance, until it is if there is a prakriti, if there is a person it is always, imbalance it is possible, the aspiration of the person, it is not possible that is why, God asks then, say, madam
No, no, this is, if a man has these three even flowing, it is, it is, it is the priest, his case, vital, he is flowing he has another, another, a similar period but three are equally flowing, balanced
Yes, yes, yes indeed, that is, because the person, these three elements, triple soul forces, God, triple soul forces mental person, physical person, vital person every person, a person, force, force force is flowing this force, there is flowing the person, its demand is right sometimes, this is very excessive, aspiration if there is a force, it is not possible imbalance, it is like the priest many people, in ashram, many people, mental problem they all, mother and share, follow the same, another, what is it? he has many experiences he lost the imbalance, mother, she said, this is the same, I have experiences vital, in the level, vital level, he said he said, mother guessed, this is vital, the experience stopped he complained, no, no, mother, I have experiences, stopped he does not know, he is good, he is good this is why, if there is a soul aspiration if there is a vessel, our body, manam, pranamayam, a vessel the vessel is strong, it is possible for example, a
No, no, correct
it is possible, no?
Yes, yes, yes
my vital, physical, mental it is only, if it is in a strong place, it is possible my examples, strong, different, if there is a soul force, it is my flowing, imbalance that is why, many people, mother and share, join, they said, you do it your examples, they are not strong you cannot do it, what is the reason? this is what you have to say, if there is a ah, the soul, inner person, if there is a prakriti, it is a spiritual
Thank you sir, heard it sir
many people, people, people who are, who are, they follow who are not following
Thank you sir, thank you
then, what do mother say? the balance is very important, in life even yogis, always, the balance is lost balance is lost, even in spiritual progress, balanced if we want to progress, ambition, spiritual ambition this is a problem, a obstacle that is why, mother and share, many letters, they tell
The mother, in the book, also, the souls, they are married
Ah, yes madam, yes madam
Thank you sir
Good morning sir
Please, say
The force is trying to fulfill the demands of this triple soul while doing so it is distracted and driven to set instinct against instinct emotion against emotion idea against idea satisfy one and deny the other then it repents and returns on what it has done it goes on adjusting, compensating, readjusting without end but not arriving at any principle of unity in the mind the conscious power should harmonize and unite but here also it is not only limited in its knowledge and in its will but the knowledge and the will are divided and not in agreement the principle of unity is above in the supermind there only there is conscious unity of all diversity there the will and knowledge are equal and in perfect harmony there only consciousness and force arrive on the divine equation that is Satchidananda thank you sir
Thank you sir, thank you very much, thank you
Sir, one doubt, sir
Say, madam
Now, prakriti, in evolution, humanity's next stage it is looking, it is looking why is it, the person, born?
No, that is person, prakriti, this is all, one aspect, one or two we have to understand, these two are different aspects that is why, if we try to learn, we will know supermind, supermind, creation, is supermind we know so, supermind, we see how creation actually comes, we see supermind, the third stage, creation supermind, first stage, Satchidananda, unitary consciousness one mind, one mind so, in this, creation, creation, no other supermind, Satchidananda, both are the same the second one, what is happening? the unity, it is inside, it is inside it is the second stage the third one, what is happening? then, it is manifested, unity, multiplication that is, that is, the practice, consciousness apprehending consciousness first stage, comprehending consciousness it is oneness multiplication is not the second one, apprehending consciousness, oneness, consciousness the third one, consciousness, it is, that is, the practice, apprehending consciousness in this, the person, prakriti, that is, the division, that is, God asks we have seen, four or five chapters before why the person, prakriti, the division, that is? in this, supermind, the third status, the practice, the person that is, the division, otherwise, there is no division, two are one that is why, prakriti, 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 lower level, what is it? its original level, force, how is it? originally, the original, infinite but humans, 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 flow the force is on a finite level no? infinite level, the fire cannot flow everything is anarchy anything is not fixed for a reason the infinite force, on a finite level it is limited but we see, the soul, that is, not limited the soul always belongs to the divine that is, that is, aspiration, what is it? it wants to reach that, its original mind, it is aspiration, it is always, up, up, up that is, the soul, is everywhere physical level, physical person pranamaya level, vital person manam, mental person so, the mental person, over person, its aspiration, is always, up, up but the fire, the fire that is its nature that is why, mismatch this is a single line, God asks this is, in Parinamaalachila, it is not possible this is, prakriti, if it is, it is not possible it is also a divine plan that is, a soul infinite, it is possible, a leg, a leg for a reason, it is possible in case, it is, infinite, if it is, what is it? in the world, all children, they are, they are that is, you say, but, prakriti, if it is, it is not possible
Okay, okay
What is the meaning of this? the force, the three, triple soul manomaya person, pranomaya person annamaya person, physical person, these three, triple soul the, 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 the person, its needs, its demands that is, the power, the fire all of them, the fire when it flows, what is happening? ah, the, 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 the the instinct against instinct this is, how, body level, instinct, body one instinct against another instinct the same, we see, vital level, one emotion against another emotion manamsandha level, one idea against another idea one is happy, the other is sad this is why, the two, the force, the desire, mismatch that is why, it is happening this is, it goes on adjusting, compensating, readjusting without end but not arriving at any principle unity a single line, a problem, a unity everything is adjustment, different souls, the message, flowing a temporary adjustment, a compensation, one, one correction this is how it happens a, a unity, a single line, that is but, manam, the message, we see manam, the message, it is ah, it is, a single, a single but we see, why man is able to do the reason, we have to see why man, why man, even a single, a single why not happen? the reason, what is the reason? man, a mind, a mind the same, the mind, mind, mind but, that is, that is man, man, a mind, a mind a mind, a mind this is, in the two, is a part man, thinking, a mind, a mind but, the power, the will it is not possible that is why, what is God asking? knowledge and the will are divided and not in agreement mind, is also, a part no, no if man, man, mind, is in a part man, is able to do man, is able to do but, mind, is also, a part mind, a mind that is why, man, cannot come but, where is the principle of unity? where is it? above in the supermind, God asks that is, the conscious unity change, change in this, a mind, a mind cannot come where is it? that is, the ideal, that is, God asks that is, the will and knowledge one, one, a life, I think, is a mind the life, who is doing? this is, either, one by one, a mind in the supermind, we see it is a perfect harmony, a single, a single that is, the consciousness and force that is, we see they arrive at the divine equation divine equation people, in the dark, people is flowing, mismatch that is, divine equation, everything is in the same where is it?